Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this Monday, May 12th. Meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to order. Our first item on our agenda is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. One, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. One, Board of Zoning Appeals. Two, Community Services Board. Three, Library Board. Four, New River Community College Board. Five, Planning Commission. Six, Social Services Board. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
fairly long detours. But we will be in contact with schools, even though it's not quite school in session, but they have summer schools and buses and stuff like that. And of course, all the emergency responders will be in touch with them as well on when that's going to happen. We don't have a time just yet. It's going to be soon because we have to do it before the pavers get in. So be on the lookout for Lick Run getting its overlay. Couple of the other patching, just again trying to keep up with, it was just normal winter breakup. We've done some on North Fork Road, still got a lot to do on North Fork Road, Piney Woods, Craig
Okay, can I have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Demonts.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and to certify the closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Demonts.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item on our agenda is the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by County Administrator Angie Hill.
Please rise for a moment of silence tonight. I will lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Tonight we do have one presentation on the agenda. We have Mr. David Clark here to talk with us about all things VDOT. Welcome, sir. Glad to have you back.
I'll talk about half the things VDOT right now and then the other half in a second during the public hearing.
Okay.
We'll do maintenance first. And we've been doing a lot of it and there's still a lot left to be done, of course. Maintenance is never-ending. We are still cleaning up storm and ice debris from the storms. We'll be doing that probably even for a while longer. We've been on Allegheny Springs Road, Indian Valley, Gold Rush, High Rock Hill, Pilot Road, Lavender Road, Falling Branch Road, most of those, you know, in the southern half of the county which got hit probably harder than the northern part of it. We've also been doing a lot of patching just in general and having to do patching ahead of the overlay which has started pretty early here. So those out Catawba Road know what we're talking about because we've already done quite a bit of paving out on Catawba Road. We've done some on Mount Taber. I've got a list here, some of the others. We've got quite a bit that are going to get an asphalt overlay down in Shawesville. I think I mentioned some of those last time. We also have the asphalt, I mean, the surface treatment of all of yellow sulfur. We're doing Fairview Church Road, Craig Mountain Road, Norris Run, Mash Run, Lick Run. We're going to be doing Lick Run, surface treatment on that. Lick Run, we'll also have to have a couple pipe replaced before we do that, and that's going to require closing that road for a while. It's going to be a long detour, but these are, you know, both runs of pipe are over 100 feet each, so you just can't, you can't do it half and half. There's no way to do it. We'll put message boards up well beforehand. If there's a break in between, we'll open it up and try to, you know, relieve some of that time. Of course, as we always do when we have to close bridges, and we do this a lot. We've had to close bridges in Bradshaw area before and even on 603 and run traffic around, sometimes fairly long detours. But we will be in contact with schools, even though, you know, it's not quite school in session, but they have summer schools and buses and stuff like that. And of course, all the emergency responders, we'll be in touch with them as well on when that's going to happen. Don't have a time just yet. It's going to be soon because we have to do it before the pavers get in. So yeah, be on the lookout for Lick Run getting its overlay. Couple of the other patching, you know, just again, trying to keep up with, it was just normal winter breakup. We've done some on North Fork Road, still got a lot to do on North Fork Road, Piney Woods, Craig Mountain. We've done some Indian Valley, replaced some pipe on North Fork Road, also replaced pipe on Gold Rush Road, Broad Shoals. We got through last Wednesday without too many incidents. That was, that was nice. Most of the congestion stuff was limited to on-campus and in Blacksburg, especially after the concert. And we started some of the mowing, just tried to get the primaries looking a little decent for the graduations that are coming at Virginia Tech and at Radford. So that's it. I don't have for maintenance. Like I said, I will be doing the six-year plan public hearing and talk about construction here in a minute.
Okay, great. Well, let's see if anybody has any questions related to maintenance. Does anybody?
I did want to mention a few more traffic engineering things. I'm sorry, I forgot. I got the maintenance, but I didn't do traffic engineering. We've been looking at a couple speed limits and reviewing some. We are going to do a speed study. There was a question of whether a sign, was it just a sign knockdown or was it an actual speed limit on Dry Valley? The request has been put in to go ahead and do a study on Dry Valley to make sure it has been studied for a proper speed limit. And then there's a request for Childress Road to extend a speed limit, and that was, that was studied. It was studied under our traffic engineering guidelines, and it was not recommended to change that. So there's a couple updates on the speed limits.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
That's okay. Supervisor Grafsky?
Hey, Mr. Clark, thanks for being here. Thanks for updates. So on Lick Run, where, where will it detour?
It's going to have to go down Norris Run and come back up. Oh, boy. Yeah.
And so will we also have some signage out there, I guess?
Oh, yeah. We'll sign the whole, yeah.
Increase traffic on Norris Run?
Yeah. I know it gets narrow and down towards the river on that road, yeah.
Okay, great. And then just kind of for your awareness and you'll have, I'll follow up with an email. But we, I got a request, received a request from a citizen that lives on Old Fort, Old Fort Road.
Yes.
Okay. And so just want to make sure that we're, we're looking into that.
Yeah, that's, that was a speed and maybe a four-way stop or something like that to try to keep some of the...
Yeah, something.
There are other traffic calming type of things. They have to come out of your construction. And generally, we try not to do a lot of, a lot of that because then it just becomes kind of a precedent, and we just don't have the funds to do a lot of physical means of, you know, like you might see in a shopping center parking lot or something like that.
Yeah. Okay, great. I just want to make sure that one was on your radar.
Yeah, I need to put that back on my radar and make sure we follow up on the, at least the four-way stop or three-way stop, whatever.
The sheriff's office is engaged as well, doing some monitoring and speed study out there as well. And then the second one, and I'll be sending this to you, is I went out to a constituent's home. The address is on Bobcat Lane, but access for it is a private drive at Mount Zion, 3360 Mount Zion. And so we repaved Mount Zion last year, I think, or the year before. It's in the last couple of years. And so the culvert that runs under Mount Zion at her, on her side, it looks like that pipe was not replaced. And I'll send you pictures. When you go to the other side of Mount Zion where it opens up, it's clearly a newer pipe, much larger diameter, things like that. And anyhow, they had a lot of backup with the rain and the ice in February. So if there's anything that we can do.
I'll double-check the inlet end. I did look at that because we've received correspondence from them as well. And I probably just saw the outlet end and thought, you know, it's not perfect, but, you know, it's about average. But the inlet end might be a little bit different. And there's actually an old pipe that's been tossed up in that area.
Yeah, that's sitting up there as well.
Seen that old pipe there.
Yeah. So I'll send you all the documentation that I have from them as well.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
I don't really have a district Montgomery County, I guess, request, but how are things going on 81, where they're doing, you know, the construction coming south? That's where I noticed the big backup for the Metallica concert coming in. Everything was moving, then all of a sudden down there it just came to a stop.
Yeah. It's on schedule. They're doing fine. You know, you have the speed limit reduced. You got reduced shoulders. You have the trucks. I think all that led to just, you know, a lot of congestion going through there. One other thing I should have mentioned is that the primary interstate six-year plan public hearing, we're doing the secondary tonight, Wednesday night down in Salem will be the one for the entire Salem district. That includes a lot of 81 stuff. So if anyone would like to show up for that and speak to the commissioner and the secretary of transportation, they will be there.
What time?
I'll send you a note on that. I think it's, I don't think it's, I was going to say four. I don't think it starts at four. It might be.
I think it's at four.
Yeah.
Do you have a location?
I'll have to, I'll have to look and see. It's been, it's been published on the VDOT social media and stuff like that, but I'll find out and I'll send something directly to you.
Okay, and over here Supervisor King.
Hey, excuse me. Thank you for the update on even speed limits. I appreciate that. On Nolly, there's several potholes on it. And if you, send somebody out there, look at the end of Nolly, right there where it goes to Pilot Road. If we, something, we could put a guard rail or something up there, but of course, that, that bank's getting really deep right there.
Okay.
It's just hard for two vehicles, once you get past that bridge. It's just hard for two vehicles to go by there.
Okay.
Especially if you're in a fire truck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kits.
I've got my two pet projects, the flashing light and the, I stick to these. And I took a, the traffic at the light again in Prices Fork. I know you said you worked on, that thing was still about 40, 45 cars deep at 5:00 in the afternoon. I know it's, but it's coming towards Radford instead of away. I would have thought it would have been the other way, but it's coming in over the hill.
Going towards Radford, so like in front of the school and stuff like that?
Yeah, all the way back. It's around 5:50. Between 5:00 and 6:00, it's still about, I've got a couple pictures. I took it, it's about 40, 50 cars deep.
Yeah. Sometimes they can get that, when I was there, I didn't count how many cars it was, but they did all clear, the ones that were in line. If they're not clearing, then might be something we can do. But if they all clear through there, then, you know...
It comes back up to the crest of the hill.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So it's right up against the, I think it's Onyx, and it's right at the crest of the hill. So the cars are back, so if you come over that hill at 45...
Then you're seeing stopped.
Everybody stopped right in front. And it's only, it's only that hour during the day. It's just that. So just...
That helps to pin down the time, though.
Yeah, it's between, I think it's 5:00 and 6:00. I think we run into it. So, yeah.
Okay. I'll go out and take a little look at that.
Thank you.
Also, the flashing signal coming the other way. The contract is being put out for that. There's going to be several in the district, and it's on that contract.
Thank you.
I'll let you know when we get a bidder and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ben.
I sent an email this afternoon. In addition to the, what I spoke of in that email, will you tell us when, or can we find out when the people are going to pick up the debris so that people can put the debris right there on the road?
And that's, we can't do, we can pick up debris that falls, like, stuff that falls in the road. We can't pick up debris that people drag to the road.
Yeah.
We're not, we can't not do that.
Well, I...
I can't, there's just no way.
No, I agree. I don't have any problem with that. My point being is now there's tall grass, so they may just not pull the stuff that's like a foot.
We'll get from, we'll get from the back of the ditch. Whatever we mow, we'll cut debris and do.
Okay. Okay.
I can't, I can't get to the stuff people come, take out of their yards.
No, I know. I don't think that that's fair either. Mount Taber, but you said you're already working on it, but it's got a lot of potholes. Galleon Ridge Road definitely needs trimming also. And on Nellie's Cave, if you start at Woodland Hills going to town, that first dip has that little strip that was paved last year that is breaking up, but water settles right there. I don't know if, when they repave it, that part, because potholes are growing around it, if they can do something to just get the water off the road.
Might have to cut the shoulders, maybe, because it might be ponding due to a high shoulder.
Thank you. That's it.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski.
Appreciate all the pothole patching. It really has made a big difference. There is one section, though, on Allegheny Springs Road. It's in the, it's in the northbound lane, and it's just south of, oh, boy, never could remember these road names. It's about a quarter of a mile off of 460.
Okay, so fairly close there, yeah.
And it's, it's not a pothole. It's just, the asphalt's just falling apart in that, that lane, that northbound lane. And I don't know, maybe they, they passed over it because it needs to be patched because it's pretty big. But it's just rough, rough road through there. What else did I want to tell you? Should write these things down. When you reach a certain age, you should write them down. No, it is a whole lot better, but it's just that, that one spot there.
Okay. You can send me, send me something if you come up with some other stuff.
Would you maybe have some time this week to meet me down there below the elementary school?
Probably, yeah, Thursday or Friday. Yeah, I got a Floyd board tomorrow, and then we got that public hearing on Wednesday. But Thursday or Friday looks good.
Okay. All right. I'll shoot you an email on that. Thank you.
All right. So first of all, thank you very much for the work that VDOT did in coordinating for the Metallica show. I think that that went better than a lot of people expected. And I know that you, that was a practice run. We have graduation this weekend. I saw the equipment setting up along 460 for the mowing, so thank you for doing that as well. I brought this up the last time that you were here, and I didn't hear you mention it in your report. State Road 696, Wake Forest Road. The citizen that passed me a note on this, it said, "Needs paving, looks like a quilt, one mile long." If you could take a look at that for me and just give me an update on...
I don't think it's on our paving schedule, so we might have to just keep patchworking it for a while until we can get it on our schedule.
Yeah, if you could just maybe write out there when you have some time. And I just would like, he sent me another follow-up last week and asked if I could ask again. He saw you were back on the agenda. So, and then don't go too far.
Nope.
Because you're next, too.
Yep.
So does anybody else have any other maintenance-related questions before we move on to the six-year? Okay. So our next item on our agenda is a public hearing related to the VDOT Six-Year Secondary Road Improvement Plan for fiscal years '26 through '31. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan. And I'm going to turn it over to you for presentation, and then we'll open the public comment. I do have a citizen that has signed up.
Okay. That was a good introduction. This will be very brief, then. As we do every year, it's the six-year plan public hearing for board members to hear from citizens on what roads they would like to see on the plan for construction. Most of the money earmarked is earmarked for unpaved road construction. The proposed allocation for next year, that's Montgomery County, is $825,000, which I think is actually more than it's been in a while. 575 of that is earmarked for unpaved roads. Those are roads that have a traffic count of 50 vehicles per day or higher. There is $250,000 allocated or, you know, towards, it's what the counties receive, and all counties receive it based on population formula, from the fee that VDOT charges telecommunications companies, fiber optic, telephone, whatever, to locate on the right-of-way. So that money is distributed to the counties in their secondary construction program. Montgomery's share of that is 250,000. That can be used in other places. It doesn't have to be used on an unpaved road with a 50-vehicle per day count or higher. We tend to just put it in with the unpaved road because it helps us, you know, get roads faster. And roads cost a million dollars a mile roughly to, to take from an unpaved road to a widened, better drainage paved road, then we put that towards that. But if there are some other projects that the county would be interested in, we could, you know, we can always look at using that fund for something that would be a little bit more than maintenance is. So for the time being, we'll assume that it's going to be there. It doesn't take resolution to do that. We can discuss it as the year goes along. If there's something that's what I would deem beyond the realm of what our maintenance forces can do that would, you know, impact other maintenance work throughout the county because we spend probably a little over 100% sometimes of the money allocated, especially this past year. Then we try to use other funding so that some large-type maintenance projects aren't, aren't affected by that. And you can use, this is construction money, you can use construction money to do large maintenance projects. I cannot use maintenance money for large, for even small, construction projects. Which is why we can't pave a road with maintenance, with maintenance money. It's too expensive, and it affects the maintenance you have to do. You can't patch bottles and mow and push snow if you've spent all your money, you know, paving a road. So there, there is that. So 825,000 is the allocation. The, I'll go through a draft plan that we have right now. This is just a draft. This is close to what was passed last year. There's been one, one switch, and I'll mention that. But then the board can hear from, from the public, and you can hear from them in person. I'm sure you get emails and all kinds of requests. We can take that into consideration. And I believe we have a field trip planned for June 7th, so that whichever board members can make it, we'll drive around and look at some of those requests that you've heard, and you can do your final priority plan in June. So with that, I'll start. Our first road on the, on the draft plan is Taylor Hollow Road. This is from the completion of the last project, which was basically at the very first bridge, and it goes to the low-water structures. We'll finish what we had talked about before. We started, we split it in two because we had some money to use last year that we had to use or we would lose. Now we're able to do this, and we're in, talking to the property owners along the second stretch. The second stretch is going to be a little bit more kind of delicate in dealing with property owners because we didn't have any houses on the first part of it. It was not, not a problem. Now we're going to be in some people's front yards for this, and that's always, you know, trying to, trying to fit that through. So we'll be talking to some property owners. Second on the list is Willis Hollow. That's off Allegheny Springs Road. We have another road in that area which was not going to work out for funding and for right-of-way reasons. So Willis Hollow is the second road on the draft plan. Third on the plan is Poff School Road, Route 601. We've got a lot of that on there. We'll have to nail down a from and to on that. Most of the time, we can't do more than a half a mile anymore these days because of various, sometimes it's funding, sometimes it's stormwater management issues. And fourth on the list is Bobcat Lane, kind of in the Prices Fork, just off Prices Fork area, down Brooksfield Road, near Mount Zion, Glade Road kind of area. That's the draft plan. We'll hear from the public, and no, no resolution is needed tonight. We'll go on our field trip, look at some of the stuff, and I would ask the board to pass a resolution in June.
Okay. Let's see if anybody up here has any questions before we open the public hearing. So don't go very far, Mr. Clark. Does anybody have any questions about the six-year plan before we hear Supervisor King?
Just one question. Did, only at 575, what'd you say the traffic count?
50. Has to have 50 vehicles a day to use the unpaved road funds.
Have you got any idea what each one of these projects would cost?
You can do, a rule of thumb is a million dollars a mile, half a million, a half a mile, or something like that.
Is that for paving or just treated?
Well, surface treatment is kind of, is a pavement. It's a hard surface. Most of the road, that's how we did Yellow Sulfur Road. It's all surface-treated. I'm trying to think, the last one's, we've done part of Willis Hollow before up to the place where there was that accident. That was surface-treated. It's a, you know, you put down, you know, brand-new stone, compact it, you put, you shoot liquid asphalt, put number eights, come through with some number nine stone, and you roll that. And then generally, you come back the next year and do another layer of that over top, top of that. That's a surface treatment. We can do a lot cheaper if our forces are doing it with a surface treatment rather than, also, a lot of these roads, we're using a rural rustic road standard. And every year, if I haven't done it during the six-year plan public hearing, before we start working on these roads, I ask the board to pass a resolution designating it a rural rustic road. Point of a rural rustic road is that we don't have to build it to what our normal secondary road standards would be. Prices Fork Road is not a rural rustic road. Prices Fork Road is a high-speed, high-volume road. You can't pave Prices Fork Road 16 feet wide with one... with one foot shoulders. You can pave probably Poff School Road, 16 feet wide with one foot shoulders. And so we came up with a different standard because that's what reality is. You can't, you know, we wouldn't be able to afford to build these roads if we had to build them to the same standard as Prices Fork Road, which is a secondary road, just like Poff School Road, just like Bobcat, just like all the others on the plan. Secondary is secondary. But realizing that not all secondary roads are the same, we developed another standard so that we could do these, you know, more economically, get more done, and really fit the community that these roads serve. And so when you pass a resolution that says we'd like to designate this a rural rustic road, what you're saying is that we don't expect there to be 10,000 vehicles a day on this. It's got 100 vehicles a day now. It's probably going to be the same unless a couple, you know, maybe a couple houses get built or something like that. Even Yellow Sulfur Road, since we've had it paved all the way through, I had some misgivings at first about that. You know, now it's a through road. And I thought, well, it's going to be a lot more traffic. There hasn't been a lot more traffic on there. And I think it was fine to do Yellow Sulfur Road even as a rural rustic road. A lot of these are like dead-end roads. Those will really not see a lot of increase in traffic. But what you will see is an increase in speed. The surface treatment will keep down the speeds a little bit, hopefully. The narrowness of the road keeps it down because people tend to drive what they feel comfortable doing. And so we do the rural rustic roads with a surface treatment, which gives you a rougher surface. Taylor Hollow is done with a surface treatment. We keep it to about 16 feet where we can, just a foot of shoulder. It gives the driver kind of a visual, hey, this is not Prices Fork Road. This is a rural rustic road with small R's. And that's the standard we tend to use. If you build it wide and you build it with plant-mixed asphalt, the speeds are going to be even higher than they're going to be after you pave it with a surface treatment. So Poff School Road, the plan for all of them is to use, you know, the rural rustic standards, 16 feet wide, one foot shoulders, surface-treated road. Part of Taylor Hollow is not surface-treated, it's plant-mixed. But that was due to weather, how steep it is. And that first, if that hill had been surface-treated, it would be a mess right now, just with the cars trying to spin their way up it on brand-new surface treatment. So we did a small portion of Taylor Hollow with plant-mix, but that was for our own maintenance reasons and for safety reasons. Thank you.
Do we have any other, yes, Supervisor Grasky?
Sorry. We got a lot of questions tonight. You would, do you have the traffic counts for the most current traffic counts for the roads that are listed on the six-year plan?
I don't have them on me. They're all, they're all about 50s. They're all probably close to the 100. Sometimes we use a rule of thumb for 10 trips per household. I know Taylor Hollow was probably about 180-ish, something in that range. Poff School Road is a through road, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it has. But I can look them up very easily and send you that information if you'd like. And I'll have, I can have that information when we do our drive-through.
Yeah, that would be great.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Clark. We did have one person sign up for the public hearing on the VDOT six-year secondary road improvement plan. So I'll invite Joss Barner to come forward. Sir, if you'll state your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to speak.
I do have Roads on the list. That's part of the presentation as well. Yes, my name is Joe Sparner. I'm here to advocate to push Bobcat Lane up to the top, priority one, or at least the initial first tenth of a mile. It has the highest VDOT ADT. It's the shortest road on there. So when it's a million dollars a mile, we're only .4 miles where some of them are two miles. It's also a bus turnaround. Bus number 11 for the middle school comes up on Bobcat to turn around to head back to the school. And I'll show you some photos. But I've been building a house out there and I've seen that bus almost get hit a couple times every morning. And you'll see from that some photos how there's a blind spot coming over the hill with the sun. And then there's the ruts that come in there. It doesn't really allow that bus to smoothly transition out of Bobcat Lane onto Glade easily. So if you look here, Bobcat Lane's .4 miles, Taylor Hollow's 1.1, Poff School is two, Poplar Hollow, I believe, has been fallen off. And so I added Willis Hollow. I didn't get the new updated version of the six-year plan until I saw the board minutes posted on Sunday. So I was able to do a quick calculation there and read. But basically, if you look at the AADT and break it down by, you know, the AADT per mile, we're at 120, where all the other ones, that yes, they're at 110, 80, and 60, but they're twice as long or even four times as long. So to put it in an apples-to-apples type comparison, we're looking at an AADT of Bobcat for 120, 40 for Taylor, 16 for Poff, 21 for Poplar, and 36 for Willis. And so essentially, we are, Bobcat, all of the other roads other than Bobcat Lane are two to five times longer than Bobcat. So it's going to cost twice to five times as much, as well as the AADT are three to eight times smaller. So, you know, price per constituent, all that stuff, you're getting a lot of bang for your buck for hooking up Bobcat. This is just the AADTs in the draft year plan from before that I was using with the AADTs. Willis wasn't on there. So it's kind of offensive that Willis gets added. And then it gets bumped up above Bobcat since, I know myself have been doing this for three years, and Dan Papsadaro was working with Mr. Shepherd since 2018. So we've had six years of, you know, six-year plans. Like I said, here's the bus number 11 turning around there on Bobcat Lane. You can see the rut underneath as well as that blind hill that's coming from Brooksfield. There it is again. Like I said, basically every rainout, I know I spoke with the bus driver and Mr. Russell out at the bus transportation supervisor. He says he's had to call VDOT, he's increasing the number of times to come and smooth out that bottom transition. So here's the end of 35 at Brooksfield. Here is, this is what it looks like coming over that hill at 7:00 in the morning to come meet that bus right there at the end of Bobcat Lane. Can't really see anything. And then you finally get, this is where you finally get a clearing to where a non-blind spot, and that's 25 feet from the road. There's the route numbers, just talking about how VDOT is, if it's an unmarked road with, you know, 600 county number or higher, I just wanted to highlight the fence line and the tree. That way you could see, you know, the distance from that blind spot hill. Here's the VDOT explaining, hey, for, you know, 600, you know, by law, you could go to 55. At 35 miles per hour, it takes 186 feet. And that's 20 feet longer than that blind hill where that bus stops. At 55, you're going to have to almost make it to buckshot before you stop from slamming in the back of that bus. Here's that rut, that bus kind of, you know, you can't floor it. There it is, a different angle at night.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on the VDOT six-year secondary road improvement plan? Seeing no other speakers come forward, we'll close this public hearing and move on to our next public hearing this evening, which is the rezoning of North Star Church. This is a request by North Star Church to rezone 10 acres from agricultural A1 to community business with proffered conditions to allow for future expansion opportunities for the existing church. And Bree has a presentation for us.
Good evening. So this property is located in the northwestern portion of the county, just outside the town of Blacksburg, off of Prices Fork Road. You can see it indicated here by the star. This is Prices Fork. And then this is an aerial view of the property. You can see the existing church and the parking area. This subdivision around it is the West Hill subdivision. And then this is your zoning map. It is zoned currently agricultural A1. It's surrounded mostly by the West Hill subdivision, Zone Plan Unit Development Residential. And then there is a small piece of community business across the street that is the former M&amp;M Tire location. So in 2014, the property was purchased, and in 2021, the church opened. In 2023, they then opened their detached office building. And later that year, they added 105 additional overflow parking spaces due to parking demand needs. So the request is to rezone it from A1 to community business. They have proffered to eliminate some of the by right uses in that zoning district change. What they are up against is currently the zoning does not allow for any additional expansion or growth. Impervious surface limitations in agricultural A1 zoning is 30% of the lot area. In community business, it would be increased to 75%. Building coverage limitations are limited to 20% in agricultural A1, and community business is 40%. So they are currently up against those limitations and cannot basically construct anything else that would be impervious surface on the property. Any proposed future uses or changes to the site would require a site plan approval from the county. So we would look at parking regulations, landscaping. VDOT would also review the request. And then environmental engineering would review it for stormwater and erosion control. So the proffered condition submitted by the applicant limits the uses to those listed here on your screen. I do want to note that while some of these uses would also be accessory to the church, these uses are basically if the church abandoned the site, how it could be developed. If the church decides to open a school ran by the church, that's accessory to the church. So it would not even have to be listed here. But this is if they abandoned the site and someone else takes it over. These are the uses they would be allowed by right. So this is the site as submitted by the applicant. You can see the large sanctuary here. This is that detached office building. And then these are some, the parking areas. Initially, when the plan come in, this was the parking area, and that does meet the zoning ordinance parking requirements. But they have had to extend that. And you'll see they've extended parking here and here. So basically, this is the concept submitted by the applicant. The red areas indicate potential future expansion area. That does not mean they would expand totally in those areas. That's just the areas they could expand. It should be noted that here is their stormwater detention area. So if they did go here, they would have to come up for some alternatives for stormwater and erosion control. This is the church campus view from the entrance. And then this is from the rear of the property. The sanctuary is located here, and this is your office structure. This is the entrance from Prices Fork Road. So you can see this is looking back towards Prices Fork Road, and then, or back towards Prices Fork. And this is looking back towards the town of Blacksburg. Here is the rear area. This is one of the potential future expansion areas. I believe this is the stormwater detention area. So like I stated, they would have to come up with some other designs for stormwater management if they wanted to go in this area. And then this is the rear area looking back towards the West Hill subdivision. Here is their existing parking areas. This was the parking area that was added, the 105 spaces in 2023. It is a gravel lot. The zoning administrator determined since it was overflow, it could be gravel and not paved. Site does have one entrance from Prices Fork Road. Turn lanes were required when the church was built, and those have been constructed. Typically, churches do not see a lot of traffic during our peak hours. So that's morning peak and afternoon hours. Any future expansion, of course, would require that reevaluation by VDOT. They did review this rezoning request and took no exceptions. The site is currently served by public water and sewer. It does not lie within a flood hazard area. And as we've stated, that stormwater management would have to be reviewed if there were any expansions on site. It should be noted that churches require no perimeter landscape buffering in our zoning ordinance. So regardless of what use group they are up against, they do not have to provide those buffer areas. Parking areas, however, do require landscaping based on the number of parking spaces that are concurrent together. It would allow for an increased signage, should it be rezoned. Currently, they are limited to 50 square feet of permanent signage. That would increase to 150 square feet. However, the height would remain limited to 12 feet in height for one freestanding sign. The site is located in the village expansion area. It's Prices Fork Village, further designated as traditional neighborhood design or open space. It does call for a mix of scaled residential, non-residential, and community uses in that designation. Here are a couple of the planning and land use goals that we picked out from the comprehensive plan, Montgomery 2025. So this is the main part of the plan for the village areas, discussing how those village areas should be developed. And then these are some goals from the Prices Fork Village plan that are met by this requirement. Compatibility with the existing uses. Proffers are expected to mitigate impacts. We believe that has been done by limiting the uses in the community business district, should that be turned over to a new owner. And then, of course, new commercial uses in the Prices Fork area. So the proposed zoning change is consistent with goals in the comp plan. The proffers do eliminate many of the uses allowed by right. And the church is a by right designation in all zoning districts in the county code. The proposed change would allow the church to grow and serve the needs of the community. And VDOT had no objections to the request. So the Planning Commission held their public hearing on April 9. There were a few citizens in attendance that had some concerns and preferred the development to take further, take place further away from the West Hill development, more towards the front of the church. Planning commissioners did express some concerns regarding that our ordinance does not require landscaping for churches, but they recognized that was a code issue not necessarily related to this rezoning. They did recommend approval on a five-to-two vote. We had one abstention and one person absent. The request included the approval of the proffered condition that was submitted by the applicant or owner, and that was limiting those uses. We did notify adjoining property owners, placed public hearing signs at the property, and placed the legal ad as required. And with that, I will take any questions you have. The applicants are here as well. Do you have any questions for them?
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Bree before we get to the public hearing?
I think I heard you say this, but I just wanted to confirm. So stormwater management would be reviewed as part of any proposed
Yes.
improvement or changes to that lot?
Yes. And they would have to redesign any structure they have in existence to accommodate whatever future expansion or impervious surface they were
Okay.
They were creating, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and open. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying no. Be louder with your body language.
Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So we talked about it. It's a zoning issue, a code issue, not a zoning issue in reference to a buffer around the church if it wanted to put in a school or anything else because it's still a church by right.
Correct.
So, trying to think of this, we're just, so if we, if it was adjusted because, let's say they added a school and wanted to grow into that area, we wouldn't be able to grandfather the code in order, or would they be willing to put in a buffer in the event? I'm just saying because if they brought forth, the people in the village, in the housing area brought forth issues, it's probably more towards sightlines and things like that. So how would that work as far as that goes? And I know I caught you short, so you may not have to be able to answer that, but...
No. If it is, so for instance, if the church ceased to exist and someone put a private school in there, at that point, we could require a landscape buffer, whatever was required by code. If the church is there and they are just opening up a school that they are running similar to Auburn, it's part of the church, so it would not fall under that separate use and would not require the landscaping buffer.
Okay. That's all. Hey, thank you.
But parking does require a landscape.
Parking does, yes.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I just want to know, why, what were the concerns, again, from the two plan commissioners that voted no?
Neither of them stated their concerns. I believe it, one was they felt like 75% impervious surface was a lot. I think the other planning commissioner was concerned... Um, I think the other planning commissioner was concerned based on some of the citizen comments that were received that evening. They were worried about the proximity of the parking to their townhouse in, in West Hill.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's a perfect segue to begin hearing citizen. Oh, Steve, did you have a presentation for us? Okay, come on up.
I'm still regaining my voice from Wednesday night.
Metallic.
It's going to be a very, very short uh presentation.
Were you in the snake pit, Steve?
Ma'am?
Were you in the snake pit?
I was, no.
Oh my.
No, you're, you're, no, no way, too old for that. Um, Steve Simonas with Balzer and Associates, AD College Street. Um, am I going the wrong way, Bree? Yeah, I am, sorry. Um, just a couple of things to add. Uh, Bree took care of everything, so she answered the questions to Mr. Kits and Mr. Grafsky the same way I would have. Um, we were approached by the church in 2023 to do the parking expansion initially for them. We didn't do the first round of site plans. Um, we've got several clients and, and friends that go to the church. They've reached out to us about a year after we finished that last, I guess it was last summer. Um, I cannot find this, Bree. Um, last summer, they said, hey, could you guys take a look with us as the church? And see where we can master plan and see where some of our future growth could be. And as we looked back into it, looked at our calculations from the, from the parking lot plan, we said, we don't have anywhere to grow. You know, there, we're, we're at our maximum impervious areas um right now. So, you know, at, at the time, the church was interested in doing, um, you know, maybe some outdoor patio space. This is their sanctuary right here and they've got a big open foyer right here as you go into the sanctuary. Great windows out of the back, you got a great view. So they said, maybe we could extend a patio out there so people could spill in, you know, before and after services. But we can't, we can't put one paver stone out there without being over that, the thresholds in the ag district. So we came in and we talked to Bree and staff and said, okay, well, what can we do? And realistically, the zoning up to a community business, as, as Bree mentioned, we could do a church in any zoning district. But a community business would allow some of those other uses that we included within our proffer statement. You know, if they wanted to put in a preschool or a, a daycare facility, um, you know, a, a special school, something like that. That that could be something that would, that would fall under one of those accessory uses to a church. Um, to continue to help grow with the community in, in Prices Fork. So it, it's really, this is just an, an opportunity to get the church in a place where we can help them do some master planning. They could plan for growth, they can fundraise for growth in the future um and give us some opportunities to do that. There are no immediate plans right now for them to go into any, any capital campaign. There's no project sitting in the wings. Um, it's really just to give us that opportunity so we can help start, uh, start helping them plan. Um, as, as Bree mentioned, anything that happens, even when we did the overflow parking lots here, we did have to go back and rework, recalculate and redesign the stormwater management for that additional impervious area. So anything else that happens would have to have the same level of, of um recalculation and design and approval by the county staff. Same with traffic, as we talked to VDOT about it, VDOT said they had no issue. Obviously church traffic is, is typically heaviest on Sundays. But if we brought in a use that was going to increase traffic during the weekday during those peak hours of seven to nine and four to six. They would just want to take a look at those traffic counts and make sure we weren't creating a situation at the entrance. Um, the, the, the comments that were brought up by our neighbors here um in West Hill. It was really, as Bree mentioned, people being concerned about parking being right up against their back property line. We do have a setback off of the property line and as Bree mentioned, we would have to landscape that. Also just want to bring up, as, as, as Bree mentioned, this is the stormwater management facility for the entire site. So from a cost standpoint, in order to put that much volume underground, it's probably about a 1.1 to 1.3 million dollar cost. So that is about the absolute last place we would ever want to future develop for a church. Um, so we, we don't see that as, as really an opportunity, but we didn't want to not show it on our plan. We wanted to be open and, and um, you know, on our, on our diagram here to show any of those areas that are currently grassed in could be. But um, you know, this is one area closer up to Prices Fork. And then this area back in here is realistically probably if any future development happens is where it would be. And we talked about the future uses if it were sold and it went to a school or something else. It would, that would constitute a change of use with the zoning and we'd have to follow all the current buffer requirements based on the ordinance. I'm going to stop there.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any questions for me.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions for Steve? No, no, no. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have somebody that has signed up to speak for this public hearing. And I um am not able to figure out how to say the last name, so it's Brian L. Brian, come on up. You will have four minutes. Please state your name and where in the county you reside.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Brian Lindemuth, I live at 890 Coldwood Way in Blacksburg. Uh, I, I lead the strategy team at North Star Church. And we, I was the one who reached out to Balzer to solicit their support. And uh, what we felt was an essential proactive measure on the part of the church as we look to our future. Steve mentioned, we, we do not currently have any projects in any stage of development. Dry erase board, finished plans, we don't have any of it. But what we did recognize was that we would need to go through a process uh to change the rezoning designate, or the zoning designation if we were to entertain a project of any kind. This is simply a proactive measure on our part to posture the church to be responsive. So that any project we would propose would be fully compliant with county code and process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I didn't have anybody else signed up. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'm going to close this public hearing and move to our third public hearing this evening. This is a special use permit for Shaw Development to allow a contractor's storage yard. And Bree, you're on again.
Thank you. So this site is in the southwestern portion of the county, just outside the town of Black, Christiansburg, rather. You can see here on this map, this is Interstate 81. This is Reiner Road. Flanagan Road is this little gray line right here. It's a frontage road for the interstate. This is an aerial overview of the property. This is the parcel in question with this existing structure. Um, Flanagan Road and the interstate are down this way. You may be familiar with this, this is Shaw's property. They used to grow hemp um on this site. And I believe they may still be doing that in the greenhouse area located here. They're just not doing it out in the fields like, as they were previously. This is your zoning map, that's all zoned agriculture A1. So Shaw Development's requesting a special use permit to allow contractor's storage yard. The property is accessed by a 40-foot access easement connecting to Flanagan. It does go completely through property they own, so it does not go through anyone else's property. Um, there is an existing 18,500 square foot structure on the site that has been used for the storage of agricultural equipment up to now. Um, they are requesting the contractor's storage yard and I've put that definition there for you. It is an area used for the storage of equipment or materials, um, used for providing construction-related contracting services. So they will utilize the existing 18,500 square foot structure to store their equipment, vehicles and materials. Um, employees will be the primary users, however, there will be no one on site full time. Um, they anticipate three to seven trips per week. Transport equipment and materials to and from the job sites. And typical hours are seven to 5:00 PM um Monday through Friday. They have stated there could be an occasional Saturday there. So when we get to the conditions, you'll see the planning commission recommended amending a condition um to allow that occasional Saturday traffic. Typical equipment that will be stored on site, trailers, trucks, skid steers, excavators. A lot of that you'll see is very similar to, to most likely the agricultural equipment that's currently stored there. Um, they will also store some building materials there such as block, stone, fencing, decking. Um, most materials will be stored inside the structure. Some materials may be located outside, but they will be within the existing gravel areas. You can see these two existing gravel areas here and here. This is the structure and I have some other views of this, so you can see half of it is open and then half of it is, is a building. So this is the access to the property from Flanagan. Again, Shaw owns all of this property here. You can see the greenhouses and the other farm structure. And then this is looking back towards Route 8 on Flanagan. The interstate is actually up here. This is the structure. You can see it's the building and then it has an open-ended area here with the gravel on both ends. And then this is a closer look at the, at the um, the existing structure that's on site. VDOT took no exception to allow the proposed use. Um, as I stated, the driveway is through property owned and maintained by Shaw Development. It is not located in a female flood hazard area. Does not require any water or sewer for this proposed use. Landscaping, screening, parking signage and other requirements will be reviewed as part of the site plan process. Compliance with all erosion and sediment control measures will be verified. However, at this time, no additional land disturbance is proposed. There should be no significant increase in noise, given the existing farming operations that occur on the site. Um, exterior wall-mounted lighting is already existing. Um, they do not have any proposals at this time to include any new lighting. And they also do not have any proposals to include any new fencing. Um, if they see in the future that they should need some fencing due to security issues, um, that would have to comply with current zoning requirements. The site lies in an area designated as resource stewardship in the comprehensive plan. Um, the county may permit non-agriculturally related uses. Um, provided they are compatible with agricultural and rural residential uses. There are limited impacts on surrounding properties. As I stated before, this use would be very similar to the existing agricultural operations that's currently occurring on site. Um, storage of the equipment and materials is located out of sight from any adjoining properties. And the project would not generate any increased noise or traffic. The planning commission held their public hearing on April 9th. There were zero members of the public in attendance to speak regarding this request and they did recommend approval on an eight to O vote. We did have one member absent. In that approval, they recommended the following conditions. The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept sketch. A basic site plan shall be submitted. The contractor's storage yard shall not be open to the public. It shall not create any exterior impacts, including noise, vibration, glare, odors or other electrical interference. There shall be no trash, litter, debris, junk or construction waste stored on site. Typical hours of operation should be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Saturday. Any exterior lighting shall meet dark sky friendly standards. And contractor equipment and vehicles stored shall be in good working condition at all times, meaning there will not be any inoperable vehicle stored on site. We did notify adjoining property owners, placed public hearing signs on the property and ran the legal ad in the news messenger. We have not received any comments from the public, nor did anyone speak at the public hearing. If you have any questions for me, I will be glad to answer them. Mr. Kevin Connor is here to answer any other questions you have as well.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Bree? Okay, um, and I know I spoke with Mr. Connor earlier. He does not have a presentation, but it's on hand if anybody has any questions. Seeing none, we will open this public hearing. I did not have anybody sign up in advance to speak on this public hearing. But any, anybody that is here is welcome to come forward, state their name, where they reside and they have four minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm going to close that public hearing and we will move to public address. Um, I do not have anybody signed up for public address this evening. But anybody in the audience is welcome to come forward, state their name, where they reside in the county and they have four minutes. Seeing no one come forward for a public address, we'll close that. I do not have an addendum to the agenda this evening, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Chair de mot?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're on to new business. Um, I'm getting some signs that some board members would like to take a quick break. How about six minutes? Re, reconvene at 8:20. No hours, six minutes. So we'll be back at 8:20. Hey, let's go ahead and get started with our new business. The first item of new business this evening is the rezoning request for North Star Church. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
So I know we already talked about it a little bit during the presentation about, I guess, the exemption that churches have from landscape buffers, but that is, I think, my only concern with this, and I know there's not a plan right now, and this is just a rezoning request. But it's just something that I hope that the owners will take into consideration with any future expansion is landscape buffering, particularly at the back of the property. You've already, it looked from the overheads, now those are older and it could have changed, but you know, there's already some buffering between that property and the neighboring school, Price's Fork Elementary there. So hopefully, we'll see something like that similar along the back.
So it makes for good neighbors.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our next item is the special use permit for Shaw Development for the contractor's storage yard. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
I'll be third.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is a fire and rescue commission capital reserve transfer. Angie, do we have any information about this before we get a motion?
There's really, it's mostly a bookkeeping item that Longshot McCoy and Reiner Rescue Squad both had improvements made for their, as required to have their pharmacies, and this is to transfer money to the correct space, to the correct line items from their fire and rescue reserve.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the Old Hail and Fields building construction. I see we've got some information to present on that, and then we also received an email about that this afternoon.
Yes.
With some layouts.
We did. There is an attachment in board docs with the layout of this project. We've talked about this for years now, I think, adding two buildings to the Old Hail and Fields site. One would be a restroom, standalone restroom, which currently is not in existence on the property, and the other is for vendors and concession storage. We have been planning for this for years, and we have one-time funds available for capital use, so it's not an ongoing cost. It's funds that we were planning to spend for this purpose for quite some time. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer those. But I think that we received consensus in the fall from the board to move forward with the project.
Okay, and is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
One quick question. Just remind me, I think I know the answer, but so does that construction cost include tying in to the water and sewer?
It does, yes.
That are available on site. Okay, great.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item is a contribution to the Community Health Center of the New River Valley. I know that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it to Supervisor Grafsky, because you've got something you need to say before the conversation.
Yeah, so I do need to make a declaration here that I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Community Health Center. I'm the chair of the Board of Directors for the Community Health Center, and so I'll need to recuse myself from this item in this discussion.
Okay, and Angie, do you have anything you want to say before we take a motion?
Yeah, well, I can say it before or after.
Well, let's take a motion.
Okay.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, now, Angie, you.
Okay, we've talked about this project a few times as well, and Michelle Bronze, who's the executive director, is here as well. We had hoped that we would be able to provide funding for the construction project, for their new building, for some A&E fees as part of the opioid abatement project and the state process with that. The regulations changed as we moved through the process, and I think about six days before the applications were due to the opioid abatement authority for grant funding, they indicated that this would count as a construction project, which has a lot of strings attached to it for that program. So I have, we included on the agenda this evening for your consideration of requests from the Community Health Center to appropriate this funding just from county funding. And Ms. Bronze is here. People have questions for her, too.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions or discussion about this? Supervisor King.
The letter that they sent us, it says, "Unfortunately, based on the clarification, the county could not support the application for OAA funding for this project, since the expansion would be considered capital. It is our understanding that capital expenditures have a 15-year time commitment to guarantee that the project must serve a OAA use, or else those funds would have to be repaid." Is this the only reason they're asking to use county money?
Is that the only reason they're asking to use county money?
Yeah.
Yes.
So they're not going to guarantee that the building will be there in 15 years?
If the project didn't move forward, we would not provide the funding to them if you did appropriate the money.
No, what I'm saying, though, it says here, they could use that OAA, but it has to be guaranteed for 15 years, or they had to repay it.
That's right. I can, I understand your question. The OAA said that if you don't, do not use the building for opioid abatement specifically. It couldn't be used for any other community health purpose under the OAA program. If the county provided the funding, we would not have that criteria. It would be, we would anticipate that it would be used for the health center, but not that specific opioid abatement program.
And they already in one of the county buildings now, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there some reason we need a new one, new building?
Maybe Ms. Bronze would like to speak to that. She gave us a presentation in the, I think in the, I don't know, a couple months ago about the program.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. I was here a few months ago and provided a presentation around the building, our concept, to put a new facility on Acres Farm Road. Just to refresh your memory, we purchased three lot, adjacent lots at the end of that cul-de-sac in 2020 and 2021 to be able to further expand our services that we're currently providing at 215 Roanoke Street. We are in that county building. That is your building. We are landlocked there. We are unable to provide any more services due to being able to hire any more providers. We don't have anywhere to put them in 215 Roanoke Street. And so for many years, I have considered expanding, along with the Board of Directors. We've had these discussions ongoing for years. Our, the need in this community is great for individuals who seek our care. 60% of our population that we serve medically, dentally, and with behavioral health services is Medicaid, are Medicaid-covered individuals who cannot find private practitioners elsewhere in this New River Valley community to care for them. We currently have a waiting list in our dental clinic of about 1,500 individuals. That's unsustainable. These individuals cannot find private dentists to see them in this community. The only way that they're going to be able to be seen is if the Community Health Center, which has a mission to serve those underinsured, uninsured, and low-resourced persons, is if we are able to expand. The 215 Roanoke Street building has about 8,000 square feet. We have gone into every crevice and corner of that building. Our new facility that we proposed and provided you the information for is over 30,000 square feet. It's going to be two stories. We're expand, quadrupling every service that we have to be able to provide the services that we know are needed within this community. So yes, Supervisor King, we definitely need this for the New River Valley, especially as it's growing, right? I mean, we are only going up in population in this community, and unfortunately, probably, we may be looking at some individuals within the next few months who may be losing their Medicaid coverage. So who will they then turn to? Well, we are that safety net in the community for them. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, ma'am. And just one more question.
Sure.
I was up there looking at that lot. How many parking spots are you planning on having? Because you know that area is clammed up.
Yeah. Number off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I can assure you that the A&E firm that we're working with has already done that math and figured out exactly how many we need.
You know, the town's already put them no parking signs on the side of the roads and stuff. It's, it's in that little cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just one of the things I heard from other people in that area. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Supervisor Byrne?
Are you getting somewhat equivalent type of contributions from the other counties and city in the New River Valley?
We have not asked yet.
Are you planning to?
We have had discussions with Giles County. That didn't really go anywhere, but it doesn't mean we can't revisit that. However, as you know, we do have clinics in those, in Pulaski County and in Giles County. I think they take ownership of those spaces and don't necessarily see Montgomery County as being something that they would support.
So of the Roanoke Street facility, it's overwhelmingly Montgomery County and what, less than 10% of anywhere else? Or how's the spread of the services that you?
Each of the clinics provide the same number of services. It's just, when you look at Giles County, for example, you've got a population of over 17,000 people. So of course, we're serving a much smaller population there, and the size of our clinic there handles the population that we have just fine.
Okay, so other counties' people are not coming to?
Very few.
I see. That's what I wanted. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Primarily, the highest percentage of patients that we serve in our Christiansburg office is from Montgomery County, specifically Christiansburg, and also the Shawsville-Ellison area.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this has a motion and a second, and Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
And then our last item of new business this evening is a proclamation for Relay for Life Week, June 1st through 7th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitz?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and let's move on to reports. County attorney report.
Nope, no report tonight.
Okay. County administrators' report.
Shocking. I do have a few things. I just wanted to give a shout out to our employee engagement committee. They are just a really awesome team. I know that we brag on them from time to time, but we had Public Service Recognition Week last week, and every day we had a special theme and activities that really mean a lot to the employees. It helps them engage with each other in a different way and have a good time together and show that they are appreciated. So I wanted to give them some gratitude. It is an employee-led group. Directors are not involved with that, so it's really cool. We have an exciting announcement that I'm going to share with you through email in the very near future. We have interviewed for the tourism executive director, and we did that last week, and we've made an offer, and it has been accepted. So I'll give you more information on that shortly when I can make the announcement. And I know Chris is really disappointed that he can't be the interim anymore, and he's done a great job, but he can just focus on his one job. Finally, I wanted to share some information with you and get consensus about how to move forward on this. You may be aware that the state budget approved a 1.5% bonus for state employees, which includes social services, registrar, constitutional officers, officer, employees. We've, we've had situations like this in the past when the state has provided bonuses or other kinds of compensation for state employees. The county traditionally provides that to all county employees, and this would be coming from current year dollars. It would not be coming from future year dollars. It's a one-time item. There's some uncertainty, I guess I should say, about when it would be paid out exactly, if it would be paid in June or July, but the funding would come out of June, one-time funding. So I just wanted to get some feedback from the board about if that's something that you would like us to bring to you, to provide to the employees. The total cost is about $467,000. About 125 of that is from state, and 345 is from, would be from county dollars.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but even within those offices, some of those employees are not comp board employees.
That's right, so.
You'd have some employees receiving a bonus within an office and some not.
Doing the exact same job. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, General Assembly.
So this is a bonus, and it isn't going to retirement. Is that correct?
That's right. And I think we'd have to pass an ordinance. Is that correct?
So do you, do you need this to be a future agenda item for us to vote on?
That's what I would like to get feedback on, if you would like it to be a future item.
I would like for it to be a future agenda item.
How much would they each get? I mean, as a percentage?
It's 1.5% of what they make.
Each person gets something different?
Yes.
Does that include administration staff?
It would not include Marty or me, but it would include other administrative staff.
Okay.
Does it include, though, the constitutional officer that would be in charge of the?
I don't know. I'll have to look at the code, but that would.
Like Commissioner, Revenue, Treasurer, and all that.
That would be a code, the way the law was passed, the budget law.
So do we have consensus to have this discussion on a future agenda? Okay, does that give you the direction you need?
Yes, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so now we'll go to board member reports, and we're going to start with Supervisor Grafsky.
Well, thank you, Chair de Mots. So I have one thing tonight, and I talked to folks about this before the meeting, but I was contacted by a constituent in my district with some concerns around the current speed. So I, I have one thing tonight, and I talked to folks about this before the meeting, but I was contacted by a constituent in my district with some concerns around the current speed limit in their neighborhood, and, you know, we're, we're looking for some direction on, on what actions could be taken, so I contacted Angie, and thank you, Angie, for your help so far. And so we've engaged VDOT to do a speed study in the neighborhood. The Sheriff's Office has increased patrols as well, and it, the, in, in speaking with the constituent, it, it's less about people speeding necessarily. The current speed limit's 25, but it's a very family-oriented neighborhood, there's not sidewalks, things like that. So the hope is to either maybe add some stop signs in, in that neighborhood, or even reduce the speed limit, but it sounds like VDOT isn't too keen on reducing speed limits below 25 miles an hour, even in residential areas. So there is another option, and so I would like for consensus from my fellow board members to initiate the process of installing children-at-play signs in the neighborhood. So again, just some sort of a visual deterrent, increasing awareness, so that when folks are driving, hopefully they're on the lookout for, for children in that neighborhood. Awesome. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, I have three things. First of all, shout out to Christiansburg for their dog park at the Huckleberry Park. I, I've, you know, I'm not a, a big dog person, but I had a chance to go over there three times in two days with my brother-in-law's dog, and I could not believe how clean the park was, how many people were there, how social it was. It's just an excellent, excellent facility. They have the small dog park and the large dog park, and they've got toys and water and all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. The second thing is that when I went to my Criminal Justice Service Board meeting last Thursday, our Western Virginia Regional Jail received the two grants that they had talked about during our last meeting. So they received a grant for $419,761. They, this would go to mental health for the inmates, and then a $30,000 grant that dealt with first responders. So that was good news for our jail, our regional jail. And then the last thing, some of you may know that we've been spending a lot of time at the Virginia Tech-McMontgomery Executive Airport doing a strategic plan update, just like we do comprehensive plan. So they will, there will be a public meeting, informational meeting, next Monday night at the airport from 6:00 to 8:00, if there's anyone that might want to attend that. And the other thing about the airport is, I found out that when Metallica came, they actually came to the airport in a private, not their own plane, but a private jet, along with one of the other bands. So two of them came in, and then all three bands left from there, and our poor airport director was there till 2:00 AM in the morning. But anyway, the, the security for them to get from the airport to the venue evidently was tighter than the security when Bill Clinton came here to go to a funeral with his, you know, Secret Service. So I thought that was interesting. So they did land at our airport, yay, and that's it.
Okay, great, thanks. And Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to piggyback on Supervisor Grafsky's request. We have the same issues at the top of Nellie's Cave when you come right out of town for not even a quarter of a mile. And you know it's gotta be bad when the residents actually put up their own watch-out-for-kids signs, right? So we definitely need that, as well as on Bishop Road, exactly what you're describing. So I'd like consensus on that. Thank you. On both of them, thank you. While I have some time, and I asked Angie to, to put on the, the light so that I didn't take too much time, I'm really struggling with six months into censure, having 100% attendance, participation, and what I feel like doing my job well, that I'm not reappointed to the PSA, let alone having to apply for NRVCS, but I will go about and do that. When, when we voted in, when we had closed session, some of the comments that were said weren't relevant to why... Marty, you're gonna have to help with a question that I asked you during tonight's closed session, that PSA, the board members are appointed to the PSA, but not appointed to... No. All board members are appointed to committees and commissions when we have board members there.
I have a question. Are we supposed to be talking about closed-meeting things in open meeting, Mr. Attorney?
But it's a question that I can ask in an open meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna ask the question in open meeting, and we're not gonna talk about the closed meeting anymore, correct?
Right. I mean, the question that I ask can be asked in this meeting, right? The question that I'm asking.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so, so for all commissions and committees and boards that we appoint people to, they have to go through an application process, like I'm gonna have to do for NRVCS, except when board members are appointed to them. Isn't that what you and Angie kinda were talking about when I asked the question earlier?
Right.
Right? And so the question that I have is the, the resolution that we voted on last time about, or the time before, about not appointing me, some, me to the PSA, it wasn't about me to the PSA, it was anybody to the PSA.
Correct.
But you said that only board members are appointed to the PSA.
Correct.
Okay, so it was about me?
No. No, my, what, the resolution says the board at this time does not want to appoint anyone to that open seat, or to the seat that you were once in, right?
But no one else could be appointed to that seat.
There is no rule that says only board supervisor members can serve on the PSA.
Can someone apply for that seat?
The board right now is not seeking applications for that position, is my understanding.
When was the last time they ever sought applications for that, for any seat on the PSA?
It's, it's been a while, yeah, I mean, because-
Decades, right?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, they, they've appointed board members to serve on the PSA board.
For the last 30 years, it's always been board members. I think at one time in the history of it, they tried something different, and, and it was a failure, and that's when they moved to just having board members, the supervisors be the PSA members.
Correct.
So I'm gonna stop talking now. I appreciate taking the opportunity to ask some questions. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Kits?
So I would like to see if and get a, I guess, a consensus with the board that the staff look into incorporating PSA as a department within the county. I'd like to be able to move forward with that. I know there are some questions for that, I'd just like to get some research done.
Are you asking for us to have a work session on a future agenda?
Yes, please. I would like to have that as a work session on the future agenda in reference to having the PSA put in as a department within the county.
Okay. And so any board member can ask for something to be put on the agenda, you don't need consensus to do that, so we can definitely have a future work session to discuss that. Timing-wise, we do need to make sure that we give staff enough time to prepare.
Yes.
So I'm just looking to Angie, kinda, are we thinking, I know the next meeting, two weeks away, that's not gonna give you enough time, but maybe, maybe the second meeting in June?
Maybe. Second meeting in June, first meeting in July.
Okay.
It depends on how in-depth you, we could give a preliminary overview, and then if more questions come up, we can get into that, provide more details.
Okay, because I know, I know there was a question in reference to, you know what, I'll stop there, and I'll just wait till staff comes back and, and is able to give me a little bit more information.
And maybe you can give some guidance to staff on some of the questions, and anybody can, if we're gonna have it in a work session.
I think it's something we need to discuss, and we need to talk about.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but I would like to say, Supervisor Bone, what she did say, she was asking about PSA in our meeting, and was told, we don't talk about that in here. So I just want everybody to know, what we voted on tonight, we, that is what we discussed. Everything else was stopped. Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
No report.
And I also don't have a report, so if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.